The total estimated cost of for replacement on Broad Street is around three hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I see there's another quote in here for the well development?
Yes, so.
This is the one I'm interested in, so we can start buying our own water.
Well, you know, we have, well, appears we have a problem with algae periodically with the reservoir, especially in the hot lines. I don't see that going away. I don't know. I'm sure Jordan can probably tell you more information on that, but it's been doing it for a while. We're buying well over two hundred thousand dollars of water every year from other agencies.
Right.
And we're not very self-sufficient when it comes to water. So, again, this is an old estimate, and I'm assuming this came from, I'm not sure, it doesn't have a name on it, but. To an estimate of drilling a well is approximately three hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars. And Jordan, I don't, Mr. Mayor, can I call you Jordan up?
Yes, yes.
Jordan, I don't know, would you care to elaborate on this?
What questions do you have about this estimate?
What does that include? Does it include any land or lease that we'd have to?
No, this is not any land that we'd have to require, but we don't know this, and it doesn't already own land, which puts us way out.
If we were to consider a well versus dredging the reservoir.
Depending on what the well would yield, I think it would be a lot better option to go for a way versus a reservoir costing millions of dollars than not having a guarantee on how long that will last.
Yeah, well, I know you said millions of dollars, and you're talking, when you say millions of dollars, you're talking about dredging it at the cost of millions of dollars, or?
Dredging in other trades to help try to prevent the sediment coming into it, but that still might not solve all our issues, just depends on how deeply we get it.
If we were to look at drilling a well, I guess it would depend upon the amount of flow that we have.
Correct.
As it stands now, at the moment, in spring, what kind of gallons per day are we looking at there?
Where permanent for a hundred twenty thousand, right, then it's putting gallons roughly ninety, ninety-two thousand a day.
If we're all terms, what would that support, household wise?
Just depends on the usage. Can't come up with more than that.
Sorry.
Can I give you a little bit of an example, like a regular gallon of water, good for a hundred gallons a day for a hundred?
Is it feasible to think that if we drill a new well with spring, that would suffice to provide water for today?
Depends on how much water we could get. Don't know what we can get out of it, and we'll have to go from that to what we could get permanent for, without taking another area.
I think another thing we need to think about is this brand-new development and the needs that brand-new development and the strain, you know, that brand-new development's gonna put on the city's water and sewer and the location of, you know, this. If we go with the well, the location, you know, of course you want it as close to your infrastructure, existing infrastructure as possible, but I think, you know, development-wise, we need to consider, you know, the future growth, the growth from the more property and the other property around it that's not developed, that has potential to be developed. So, I know we've already talked about a lot of stuff that's going on, so I think before we go, we start considering that.
I just, I just think that, I don't know that a well is the way to go for sure, but I know that given the amount of money we seem to be paying out every year, we need to at least consider other options than what we're doing.
Absolutely.
Now, I'll leave this contract. I'm getting, it's not accounting, but we're getting the best price we're getting from line and correct. And my understanding is that's close to what it would cost, what we would be able to yield with our own water.
For water, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Where the county water was considerably higher for us.
Is one hundred bad from the county?
I'll leave you with the questions. I'll leave you with the questions.
Can we go back to the infrastructure just for a second?
Sure.
I want to talk about the siren for a minute, because that was kind of that project that I tried to take on. And I talked to the chief, the Assistant Chief, Glenn Kane, the other day about, about the siren. And the Whelan siren that we have is currently inoperable. We've had, we got a price, we got a price a couple of years ago to get the existing siren fixed. And the price that was given to us to get that siren fixed was pretty, pretty high. I mean, considering that's a nineteen ninety-five model Whelan siren.
How much is it for now?
What's that?
How much is it for now?
It was over half the cost of a new siren. So, that being said, the cost, the cost was too high for, to repair this siren. So, we looked into getting a used siren, but I talked to Assistant, Assistant Chief Kane, and he advised against us getting a used siren because of the liabilities. And so I think, I think at this point, we need to move forward. We have a couple of years' worth of money in the budget for the siren that we haven't done anything with, but the liability exists because we have a siren and it's not, not functioning. And I think we need to move forward on getting a new, a new siren. Federal City has some nice new ones. We have the pole, we have the power, we have everything we need. We're currently using the E nine-one-one system, which is basically, you know, everyone using their cell phones. But the problem I have with, with that is that everyone doesn't have a smartphone. You know, some people still use the home phone, and I think with, given the population of our community, older folks, whoever's here, the number of people that don't have smartphones, I don't think it's fair that they not be warned of a tornado or a natural disaster that could cost lives. And I think public safety, you know, is very important. So, we're going to revamp and relook. I know there's some grant money available. Of course, we'll be held up with audits, but public service and public safety grant money is, is available for stuff like this to improve the infrastructure, especially with the projected growth. So, I think, I think we need to relook at, at getting a new siren.
I believe there was, it might have topped, topped with it, I believe there was already a budget for the two years' worth. So, there was, I think, something over twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
Which then, then began to cover the price that we were getting from some of these companies, which wouldn't even get close to it. So, you know, it's, it's a public safety issue for me, and I take it personal.
What?
Could we have something like festivals or fundraisers as citizens to help raise money for this?
Absolutely. I mean, we can do all kinds of things, but I just, I just think it's time that we look at improving. This is, you know, public safety and sirens and all the stuff is part of our infrastructure that's been neglected. That, that siren up there just spins around and spins around, and, you know, every time a storm hits our community, I get this bad feeling that I'm, I'm an elected public official and I said I was gonna do something about it, and I haven't been able to do anything about it until now, and now I can't. I've got help, we've got the support, we've got, you know, we've got some new things going for us here, and I think it's time, I think it's way past time that we move in the interest of our citizens. And on Friday afternoon at five o'clock, we can do, do the test. We can do a test every Friday at five o'clock. You have to do the maintenance on the old siren, but, you know, if it saves, if it saves lives, how much is that worth? You know, it's priceless to me, so.
Mr. Johnson?
We were, that has been discussed for the last two years. And we were gonna check with our senators, did we ever step out and just, because we don't know if it really needs grant money as much as it could be out there as a public service by the Public Service Department. We have not ever reached out realistically to the, those groups and see if it's some state and federal monies, because that's something that might not even fall under the grant, that's something we need, is something that we just have not pursued to even find out if it's available to us.
Well, I know, and a lot of times when you go for, when you, when you ask for state or federal money, the first question, how are you doing on your audits? Or, you know.
I know, but we haven't pursued, we haven't not pursued it at that point in time to ask any other questions outside.
Can I?
Right.
I mean, we need to do the, I mean, we need to proceed to that first before we start worrying about putting the citizens to burden on the money being raised to, because they're already paying taxes here, we're good taxes to take care of.
I'm gonna reach out to Frank and some of our representatives about, about seeing, seeing what we can do.
Okay.
Because, you know, I don't want any more storms to go, I don't want another spring, I want, I want to handle it. I want to do everything that we can do to get it fixed, and that's just the beginning, so.
Ms. Joyce?
I have a meeting with the governor next week, another issue, can I mention this to you?
Absolutely, Joyce.
We'll take all the help we can get. I'm open when citizens come up and say they have connections, we'd be forced to say, don't need your help.
I'm on a committee with the governor that we're meeting next week, and I'll, I'll bring this up to him.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give you the make-in-model number of the siren we want.
Send it to me and I'll.
Slide it across his desk.
The governor and I are good friends for years.
Or anything higher than this.
Okay.
Councilwoman?
I'll, I'll make sure of another, there's twelve thousand dollars that is funded for maintenance repair siren for this year.
For this year?
Still on the infrastructure. Jordan, I also explained from about water civilize. We may, I think there's some issues of not knowing where some of the old lines are located. And I think that we need to discuss in the near future as well about getting updated maps, I don't know if that requires an audit to get that, I'm not sure how we'd have to do that, but not knowing exactly where your lines are, I can see being a problem, and it's not necessarily anybody's fault, we're just getting around someone. Moving on? We recently had discussed moving the police department here temporarily, has a quick fix, so that they can start renovating and updating for the library. And on that note, we have to come up with a long-term solution. And whether we decide to use what building, whether it's the current Public Works building or whatever building we decide to use. I think we need to consider getting bids, see what it would take to renovate the Public Works building. It's a piece of property that we own, it's in a bad state of disrepair. And if we're gonna audit, I think that we should, should keep it up. You know, we have, we were talking earlier about bricks falling off, you know, the sidewalk of Redwood Street. At the same time, if you go into the current Public Works building, stairs over there are so steep, they're not safe. Inside of the building definitely needs to be renovated. Some of the brickwork has been splitting off over the past years and has been patched up. The windows are in disrepair, there's some rot there, and it doesn't have any kind of central heat or air, as my understanding, it looks like we got window maintenance in there. So, I would encourage us to see what it would take to renovate the building, because if we're not gonna renovate it, we don't need to let it fall apart. Likewise, my understanding, we have acreage on Providence Road that the city owns.
Three acres.
So, there's three acres on Providence Road that's set vacant. If there's no plan of using that acreage in the area of residential area, then we don't need it. That could get us to renovate some other properties.
On that, I mean, I think we should hold off until we get, we get through moving. I mean, we're basically playing with all we here with our city's infrastructure. And on, on that note, I would, I would entertain the idea of maybe next month, having an open forum. Not, not a work session, not a city council meeting, no voting, but just having an open forum about the possibilities that exist with, with the move in the police department and shifting our assets around. You know, public input, see what, see what everyone thinks, and.
Absolutely. I mean, I don't have any problem with you taking public movement, I'm just not sure that many people knew that we even had acreage over there, it's just.
Well, in, in that note, if we got approved, if we got our grants, if we got grant, if we got our audits and we can start looking into parks and grant money exists for green space in parks and up preserving, you know, a builder would slam ten homes in there, and I think that green space is more valuable to the city, to me, as it is, than the money that we would get for it. It could be another park, it could be. We don't, we don't have a park for, for all of the homes going up Providence, there's no park, and that one would be right on the way coming into town. So, I like, I like the idea of waiting until the audits come in and seeing what kind of bodies are gonna be available. Foral State and that, we have a connection to the governor.
Council, I'd just like to know, you know, you're on the police department right now, and talking about rebuilding the building and everything. How many police officers do we have, you know, state-owned police officers that are working now for the city? How many do we need to fully, you know, get police, as far as state and city police, you know, out here around the block, you know, that are on duty? And, you know, I just want to know how many people it's gonna take, and this is something we should consider too, on moving the building, how many people we're gonna have to, you know, hire, have, you know, house, and sit.
Okay. First question, we have three police officers presently on duty. We have Officer Wood, Officer Davis, and Officer Brigham. Our new police chief will be sworn in Monday the twentieth. He has some candidates that he wants to look at. As I've been told by everyone I've talked to, stated needs a minimum of a police chief and four officers. Optimally, they'd like to see seven. That would give a little bit of overlap, also make it better when a police officer needs to take time off, like all of us like to take. But presently, we only have three. We are working on it. I think everyone will be happy with Police Chief Underwood. But I believe he will make every effort to move the city forward and get the right people in as quick as possible. Can I answer that?
All we can hope for.
Okay. Excuse me?
I just said, I noticed that they're not sitting on, on two eleven in front of L. Mayor's House anymore.
They are giving us their best at this point, I think, so.
Who is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Who is taking care of, is Barrow County's public, we're taking care of the slack diamond, we don't have police presence out here.
The sheriff's department has promised us that anytime that we need, they will make every best effort. They are taxed with the, with the amount of area that they cover, with the number of officers that they have. They're kind of in the same boat as we are, but they have backed us up in the past, we have backed them up. Officer Davis has done a fine job of stepping up and taking on a lot more responsibility at this point than we're paying him for, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure the city does. And when, once Chief Underwood comes on, and he promised me that he would make every effort to get that move forward fast and efficiently, so.
Thank you.
Ms. D.
There's no other input on that. The next thing I'd like to discuss is personnel and data breach policies. Much like our financial policy, I think that we should look at our personnel policy, there's some contradictory statements in it, and it's heavy on the city administrator and very light on reporting things to the city council. I think that some of the things in this policy, as it currently reads, should include notifying the city council. And it's just gonna take time to get through it, so I'd like to see us get through that and make necessary changes. Currently, the city doesn't have a data breach policy, I can tell you from experience working in technology. There's a lot of information, personal information that organizations store. And if that gets breached, if that data gets breached, then public information is out there in wrong hands. Currently, we don't have a policy in place to address how we handle that. Likewise, we don't have a policy in place on how to handle ransomware. Basically, ransomware holds your computer system and your data hostage and demands money for you to get it free. It can happen here, it happened in Jackson County, shut their government down. It's happened on my watch when I was a tech director for Madison County. It certainly happened here. I think we need to reach out, get policies in place on how we handle this, where it happens. So, I'd like to put that on the agenda at some point in the near future, so we can have those discussions. Probably we'll be lengthy on some of these things. Vendors and contractors, I think it's safe to say that some of our vendors and contractors have been reviewed in a lot of things such as our mobile phone bills, you know, my area of technology. There's numerous vendors that we did work with, I think it would be fair for us to review our vendors and our contractors, see what we're paying them, allow for bid. The last thing that I have on the list is our, our meeting structure. A little confusing on our meetings. I know after a while, you just kind of get used to it, and you look at your calendar, and you still have to look at your calendar regardless of whatever date of the meetings, but as it stands now, when people ask me, when are your meetings? When else, Thursday before the third Tuesday, not asleep. And when else on six-thirty, and when else on seven o'clock? I would like for us to consider changing the dates and times, or at least have public input on changing the dates and times of the meetings. Barrow County Board of Commissioners meetings, if I'm correct, are held on the second and the fourth Tuesdays. We could potentially hold our meetings on the second and the fourth Thursday. That gives us enough time to where if subdivision came before us, or there's some other matter that comes before us. We got longer than a weekend before we have to make a decision on whether or not to vote yes, no, or table it. Also, it gives more time to have public input, so that we can discuss this and maybe not run into quite so many problems.
Meaning amount of time between the work session and the council meeting?
Yes.
Is what, making it a week instead of three days?
You're doing the second.
So, be two days.
Second and fourth.
Second week, second Thursday and fourth Thursday.
Correct.
Be two weeks, so.
It gives everybody opportunity. Public can discuss it, and know what's coming, and then they're, they're more likely to give us input. And we have time if it's something we need to look at, need to discuss, doing zoning issues or ordinance, or if it's something that affects our charter, we can, we have more time to do our due diligence as well.
What's that? Excuse me?
I just say it creates a problem for me, changing the meetings, if what you say, give.
Yes, ma'am.
That's only me if I can be, if I can be, but I want to be on something, and I can't be, just to change.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not the second or fourth, that was just an example. We would give, obviously, we'd have to give with everybody to make sure the meeting worked. That's really why I suggested having input for the meetings, but I think at the very least, the time should be consistent, if nothing else. But I know I would definitely like more time between meetings than just to have one on the Thursday, have a weekend, and then let it.
I would also like to move, not move, but I would also like to consider that we start putting the exact date for the council meeting on the website, on the agenda. Someone took it upon themselves to, well, complained that we were having meetings, our city council meeting was every third Tuesday, and that that was not sufficient, that was not sufficient notice, or that was not sufficient notification, for whatever reason. I know for a fact, there's not more than one third Tuesday of every month I've ever lived.
I would phone call.
But for whatever reason, this person found it necessary to complain about this petty little thing that's been working for years and years and years. So, I guess we need to consider that we start putting the exact date for the city council meeting and post it wherever, I mean, we can still, we can still, we can still say that it's, you know. and post it wherever, I mean, we can still, we can still, we can still say that it's, you know.
I think there is a state regulation on it, according to the representative from the DA's office at the Open Records. I believe, and she said that it is a regulation that you need a date. It has been a normal, but a normal doesn't make it right.
Right.
So.
So, you know, that's just where we're at. We're, we're living in the age where, you know, you're gonna get sued for every little bitty thing you do, like how good, how much, how much you're trying to change. You're gonna, we're just gonna get sued on every turn, so we need to take precautions, you know, follow everything to the letter and follow the rules. And, you know, what, what used to work doesn't work anymore, so. It's unfortunate, but we need to consider that also.
The last thing I have on any of this was, I would like and appreciate if we can do roll call votes. So, when we have a matter coming before us, I'd like to have it in the hall, and I guess.
Or that's, that's recorded in the minutes. The roll call, when you raise your hand, is recorded in the minutes.
It absolutely is, I'm just questioning that, can we go around, go around the table? If the name's calling, we say yes, or we say no?
Well, I see, I see where that's.
I'm saying.
Right now?
I'm saying.
But it's already recorded. I don't understand what the roll call, I mean, we got roll call right there, right, I, I see the book, there in minutes. I don't understand what that would do, if everybody raised their hand or, or they don't. I mean, I see your point, if there's, you know, if you got a council and mayor of ten, and you've got a couple hundred people in the audience, but State of's not big enough.
I think the roll call is preferred, from what I've been reading. I'll take it under advisement.